Meeting in the Shattan City Council order. Would you please join us in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection eight in Nebraska statute, statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the open meeting act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. Before we have roll call, I'd like to welcome all the guests that we have this evening. Could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Here.
Klein?
Yes, here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Graves?
Here.
Oleksi?
Here.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
No, I missed this.
Motion by Clay, seconded by Kevin, to approve the agenda. Could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Oleksi?
Yes.
Can we have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane, to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes for the city council meeting held September fifteenth and the special city council meeting held September twenty-ninth. So we have minutes from the PRT problem resolution team meeting held August twenty-seventh. Special designated licenses that were administratively approved. Since the last meeting was the favorite bar for the outdoorsman banquet at the Dodge County Fairgrounds on September twenty-seventh. And the favorite bar for the harvest moonfall festival at the Dodge County Fairgrounds on October fourth. Anyone have any questions about any of that information? It was, thought it was interesting that there, I did see at least one problem that got off the list. I think there were two, which is nice to see, so.
I'm gonna have a third one come up next.
Yeah. We'll try to find a replacement. No. Please don't. Could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Oleksi?
Yes.
Okay. Report on free trees. We have Scott here.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Yeah, I, uh, we applied again for the ten free trees grant for the Nebraska Forest Service and received it. These trees came in, they're really high quality trees. They can bring them in from a quality nursery. They're all, uh, they come in tree bags, so it's not a potted thing that you buy at the, you know, the stores, the box stores and stuff. So it's a way better tree. Uh, we had, we got all ten of them this year. Last year we gave some out because of the storms that they had in eastern Nebraska, but we've had enough tree damage here through the drought that we decided to take all ten this year and I applied for all ten. We planted them, we put them in, uh, Finnegan Park where we've taken out, I believe, six trees so far. We'll probably have about three or four more that have to go do drought related because that park is not sprinkled and we just didn't have the help to lay pipe as much as we want to. So, uh, we put, uh, four of them in Wilson Park for the trees we've been taking out of there. These team, trees still stem from our anniversary date coming up on winter storm Atlas that we took, you know, we lost a hundred and fifty trees out of the park system alone, not including the cemetery or any of the outlying areas or anything in town. So it takes a long time at, at ten trees. And these trees are valued anywhere from two hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars apiece. So it's a pretty good bonus to get them. They're all five to seven foot tall, you know, three quarter inch caliber trees, so. They're really good. We, we get asked for requests from what we wanted and that's what we got, so. Uh, that was a plus too, so.
What, uh, the flavor of trees do we get?
Uh, we had three different types of oaks, variety wise and flavor. I've never tasted. But yeah, we had three different oaks. We have a couple of elms, uh, a couple of locust trees. The stuff that's hard, we actually put a couple more hackberries in. Because we had, we are hackberry heavy, but we're also losing some hackberries. But that's a very hardy tree for this area, so it's hard not to keep planting those. We have no disease, no bugs, no nothing, so. Good tree for this part of the country. Just takes a little while to get them going, but. And then, uh, I also want to give a shout out to Keep Shattan Beautiful and David over there. He's been helping us with the, um, city parking lot over here across from Safeway. And, uh, they actually went up and got three trees for us too to replace some of the trees in that parking lot. So we did plant those too, so. And they purchased those through a grant they received. So we planted thirteen trees last week, so.
Is that, is that, were there by that parking lot, is that one of them on the sidewalk?
Uh, not in the sidewalk. We're not gonna replant that one that's inside. We took that great big hackberry out of there that had the storm damage from the summer storm from the wind. And, uh, we'll grind that stump this winter and get that cleaned up and out of there. We'll probably pour that back in. We planted the tree back in the planter behind it. Because hopefully we can cut that backside of curb out of that. And so we plant, there are more ornamental trees in there. We put a couple, uh, purple leaf sancheries. And I believe, I can't remember what the third one was, but, uh, the purple leaf sanctuary that's in the front up there, it still is pretty ragged shape, so we're gonna take it out. So we pre-planted right beside it, so we'll try to get them going. And the one pod that's down by the, um, the new sign that we got painted on the building. That front pod is, they're gonna work on that cleaning the root system out of that one and try to get it cleaned up. And then we went ahead and planted the tree in the center of it. We had some time just to do the center of it, but. Wanted to give them a shout out because that was a big help to us. Anytime we get free trees like that, we'll take them, so. Any questions?
I have a general question about
Yes, sir.
trees. Many, many moons ago, I, I think it was a Qantas program. I went and Don Halls was talking about trees. And he said, "A bur oak is really a good tree to have, but it's so glow, grows so slow." I planted one at my rental and I can't believe how much that thing is growing. It's getting big.
Yep. A lot of varieties, uh, the oaks we have in Memorial Park out there, all the, set along the, the curbside on, um, Eighth Street as you go up to the school. They're, they're amazing how much they've grown in the last few years. We had to trim back the, the curbside trees twice in the last five years.
I had to try, because the branches is
Yep.
goes straight out.
Yeah, but oaks are gonna go on. We've, uh, planted some, uh, chip, uh, chinkapin oaks and some English oaks and red oaks.
Pin oaks?
Uh, we haven't had, don't have any pins, but the reds we went away from because we've tested those for the last few years and reds are really hard to grow here, but the chinkapin is a really good oak variety to grow here too, but. But yeah, the, everybody told us that too. I know I had a, I have one, I planted one. Oh gosh, it's probably been eighteen years ago now, at least, maybe even twenty years ago in my backyard. And the last two years, George, I bet it's grown eight feet. I mean, it just, and it's huge. It's, it looks like a, looks like my blue spruce I have back there that's thirty years old. It just keeps getting.
So would that be something be, do with the climate, the kind of weather we're getting or something, or?
I couldn't tell you. You know what? The, we've had the worst tree weather for the last couple of years that we've ever had. The drought is not good for anything, but, you know, it, maybe it's because I baby them more and give them more water with the hose than I should. But, you know, and maybe that's why they have been growing better. Anybody that does.
This one doesn't get any water from the hose.
Yeah, well, that's, you're lucky. Well, maybe that.
Maybe it's the soil runner, because there's
It could be.
bur oaks all over the Black Hills.
Yeah, bur oak is good. You know, we have, there's a place in, well, over by Harrison, there's a, an oak canyon over there that's one of the, uh, tour destinations. There's also one down by McCook. Uh, it's actually called Bur Oak Canyon, just west of McCook. And you come up on that and it's a three quarter mile long canyon. You can't see it from anything till you get up on top and there's thousand year old oak trees in it.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, good, good variety to grow around here. Yes, Don, and I agreed with him because most people say that it takes forever. I know I had an old neighbor that used to live a couple houses down from me, had an oak tree in it. I told him it would take a long time ago and he didn't. They finally just took it down, so. It got a little more wind damage and, but they, they're pretty hardy trees. And the one good thing about them is, as much as we bite the deer, the deer don't like to bark on the oak trees. They won't rub on them. Too rough. They like the smooth stuff. So.
Interesting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. On, uh, item D on the agenda.
I mean, C. I'll introduce resolution
C, yes.
uh, twenty twenty-five dash eighty-nine and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Kevin for resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eighty-nine, which is to approve the specification for a new twenty twenty-six, our newer two thousand gallon per minute custom-built, underwriters laboratory certified ladder truck for the Shattan Volunteer Fire Department.
Any questions?
So. Tell us who you are and where you live.
Brandon, Brandon Barnes, Shattan's fire chief. Um, the guys have worked really hard the last several years and I know everyone down in the city has too, as far as the grant. We've been fortunate enough to move forward with the Senator's grant. That being said, um, the committee down at the fire station has speced out a very nice truck to move forward with our current truck of a two thousand. So, um, ISO changed some things as far as what you're getting credit on. It used to be seventy-five feet or your tallest building to, for your reach, uh, for a hundred percent credit. Now it's a hundred foot minimum or you're, reach your tallest building. Well, we have high rise and you're gonna need a hundred and sixty foot aerial to get to the top of that thing, so. Um, in order to get our full ISO credit for homeowners insurance, we're looking at a hundred foot minimum, so this is a one oh seven, um, straight stick. There's a lot of different options guys can look at. I mean, there's platforms and different specs for aerial trucks all over the place, but, um, a lot of our residential places that we do take that truck, we gotta be able to go down somewhat of a narrow street or set up in an area that we can still work and still use the truck, not have a huge, huge truck, so. Um, the rest of it, I mean, looking at kind of what the committee has done, they've made a little bit larger hose bed area as far as loading. I'm sure a couple of you guys have loaded hose into the back of our current fifty-one and it fills up after about three, four hundred foot and there's nine hundred foot in the back. So, um, the other thing they've kind of standardized is the size of the pump. The pump is now a standard two thousand gallon minute pump from this company. A lot of that has to do with the discharge valves and things like that, water out, not so much water in. That's how they get some of their ratings, but, um, every big truck down there that's an ISO truck would be a twelve fifty down there. So this would be a two thousand gallon minute rated truck, but, um, other than that, we've gone to the twin screw instead of just a single axle in the back. We do have a height change of four inches. Um, we do have twelve foot doors, so we're gonna have to address going into that later on, but, that's, as far as the length of the cab or the chassis itself, um, we're actually only going about four feet longer. But in doing so, the chassis that the, the department, that department's looking at would be the similar chassis as our city pumper thirty-two down there, so it's a stub nose, kind of thing, that'd be easiest one to kind of for you guys to look at. But that, it would be the aerial on top of that, so that'd be kind of going with the motor over, inside the cab, then you'd have losing some length that way, so, kind of helps both ways.
You mentioned earlier with that two thousand gallon per minute pump, that it's kind of a standard with one of the potential bidders.
Correct.
Is that standard with the other bidders that might bid it on, or do they?
They, and it can be changed. The, the thing, when you start getting into changing into a, a different sized pump, things like that, you get more into the real custom stuff. And we're trying to keep the truck as much as we can into the cookie cutter program. Um, and so that's kind of why we're stuck with the same cab configuration that we already have. Looking at a lot of the, you know, we actually got rid of the generator that's on, from like our truck right now. We didn't put it on there. We went to LED lights, um, so it's running off the truck alternators. There is a small inverter in there, but it's no big, bigger than this right here. So there are some changes that we've obviously made. Obviously, it's twenty-five years newer than our current truck. But, um, as far as the pump, it can be changed to something else, but a lot of times what the companies do is save money is they'll have the pumps pre-built with the manifolds on it. And then whether they use six outlets or four outlets, they're gonna plumb that to your truck and your needs. And so that's how they can save money instead of just doing each truck, each plumbing, building a manifold kind of thing. So that, that allows them to save a little bit of the cost kind of thing, too.
So that two thousand gallon per minute is pretty standard across the different, uh, manufacturers, then?
I would say, and it's, it would be a standard. It's also, um, available if they wanted to change it too. Once, the nice thing is like with, or one thing with, like, let's say this company, when they're doing this pump, they're already gonna have the manifold and everything put together. So the manifold pump and everything's gonna get put into the chassis and then they're just gonna run the plumbing out based on what the needs are here, whether we're running four outlets or two outlets on that side kind of thing. And then the next truck behind it might put three on that side and four, it's the same manifold, they're just changing. So that's how they can save costs. They don't have to have everything engineered. And that's how they've also, if you stick with this cooker, cookie cutter program, I would say, something like that. Everything's been pre-engineered, it's pre-tilt tested, pre-things like that. So that way, they know this truck will already pass the tilt test. They know this truck will already pass all these different tests. You're not having to do a custom. Once you do custom this, custom that, you're gonna have to do its own tilt test, its own test for this, its own test for that. And so that's where you start getting prices go up even higher and higher, so. We wanted this truck here, what we're looking at is what for the commu, community department and the members for everyone's safety, insurance, planning, things like that. So we wanted to save as much as we could, but at the end of the day, we still gotta keep our guys and everyone safe too.
Any other questions? Thank you guys. We have roll call, please.
Clay?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Oleksi?
Yes.
Item D on the agenda?
Uh, introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash ninety and move for its approval.
I'll second.
Introduced by Mark, seconded by Clay. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ninety is to approve payment application number four to Fuller Construction Company LLC for the construction of the ADA restrooms for the downtown plaza. It's in the amount of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eight cents.
Okay.
Yes, Janet Sanson, um, that, as George just stated, this is pay request number four for the downtown plaza restrooms um, in the amount of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eight cents. We're nearing the end of what's going on over there. Electrical was going in today for the, into the soffit area. The roof metal still needs to be installed. We still need to install doors. The plumbing fixtures need to be, um, put in. Painting the interior of the walls needs to be done. They haven't insulated the roof yet because they're waiting for the metal to be put on the roof. Most of the concrete on the exterior of the building has been done. And they still need to move the manhole for the Christmas tree. So we're near, like I said, we're nearing the end. So, um, I think we'll have at least two more pay requests come in. Pay request number five and then the final with retainage. So. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I looked over the things and it seemed like some of it's been done beyond what this is applied for.
Yes, yes. They are, they are further along than this pay request. You're absolutely correct, George.
So, no other questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Oleksi?
Yes.
Okay, item E.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash ninety-one and move for its approval.
Second that.
Motion by Kevin, seconded by Shane. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash ninety-one is to approve the change order number two rule of construction in regard to the ADA restrooms at the downtown plaza.
Okay, so now this is an increase, um, for the change in the block. The two interior walls for, um, which are the outside walls for the mechanical chaseway were originally designed to be six inch block. It wasn't until the plumber actually opened up the, um, boxes for the plumbing fixtures that were ordered almost ten years ago, that we found out that the block needed to be eight inch block. Either that, or we had to use different plumbing fixtures. It was much cheaper to increase the block size to eight inches from six inches. So this is what we're paying for is the increase from a six inch block to an eight inch block. And, um, it's probably my mistake. I should have gone back into the original order of those fixtures from ten years ago to look at that. And say, hey, wait, wait a minute, we need to make sure those walls are eight inches instead of six.
So, so you explained it, kind of, as the size of a six inch block, but in the, our inner information, it says CMU. What does CMU stand for?
Concrete Masonry Units.
Okay.
You thought you were gonna stump me, didn't you?
No, I didn't think. I was just curious. It's a curious George thing.
So I apologize. Like I said, I should have caught this way back when we were in design and I didn't even think of it, so.
So they need to be eight inch just so they can hold the fixtures themselves?
Right. The fixtures were designed, the neck on like the toilets are eight inches deep instead of a six inch neck. So, same with the urinal.
Any other questions? Kind of a have to do thing, I think.
It's a nominal amount as well.
Yeah, and there's no labor difference. It's just the difference in the material.
Other questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Thank you.
Yep.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Oleksi?
Yes.
Okay, now we're, need to approve two appointments through the planning commission. Bob Hardy is currently an alternate member of the planning commission. He would like to be appointed as a regular member and Catherine Burrows has written a letter asking to be a member of the planning commission. Therefore, I guess, in a way, Bob Hardy is moving up to a regular position, probably replacing someone who resigned. And then Catherine Burrows will take his place as an alternate member. And then Catherine Burrows will take his place as an alternate member.
I'll move to approve the, uh, two appointments, as you mentioned, for the planning commission.
I'll second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Clay. To approve those individuals, Bob Hardy is a regular member of the planning commission and Catherine Burrows is a. Alternate member of the planning commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane, to approve the claims, anyone have any questions? I. Reviewed them, um. The credit card at FMBO is big enough to choke a mule, but. That's the way it is.
Well, I, I'll just add on that, George, just to make sure that everybody understands. A lot of the companies now are, are doing a increase on their net payment thing, instead of used to be like net thirty. We're getting cu- cut down like to net fifteen, net twenty, and it's just not possible for us to do some of those things. And, uh, so that's why the credit cards are being used, cuz we can get that taken care of to avoid the late charges on a lot of the things that we've got. And then there's other things that some people just will not do direct charges for us anymore. So we, we use the credit cards on things that are one-time purchases or seldom-used purchases as opposed to setting up some of those things, so. Yeah, that's, that's some of the reasons for the credit cards being used.
Anyone have any questions? If not, could you have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Okay, we do, don't need a resolution to excuse any council members. Time for public comment period, anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda may now do so. And individuals are allowed a total of three minutes to speak. Do we have any takers? None, none of you students wanna get up and say what a great job, teacher, Mr. Nobling is? Thought I'd ask. Okay. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, I just got a quick couple of things. Um, just wanted to remind people about the grass trees, uh, not only in their front yards, but alleys, anything like that, that they need to be cutting down. Trimming up, as we did have growth in several areas, different trees seem to be taken off in different, different areas. Um, it would help us, it also helps swan, it also helps our emergency response vehicles, too. We do have accidents in the backyards, too, and Brandon can attest to that, Scott can attest to it. When you got a rescue call, trying to get down through some of the alleys are very tough, just wanted to remind people. Also wanted to remind people, winter is coming close. Uh, there's actually a freeze possibility, so people that have garden hoses hooked up, things like that, be aware of that, to, to have that possible. Freezing happening in their houses to avoid any problems, uh, do a little preventive maintenance. And then the last thing I wanted to do is actually thank the students for participating in our comp study. Um, we had, uh, people from errors and associates that actually went up to the schools, both college and the high school. And went into Mr. Nobling's class, and we got some input from the students and from the faculty and students up at CSC. And I appreciate the students doing that to help us try to figure out more strategies and different, uh, issues that we can do, so. Thank you to the students and, and our staff for allowing them to do that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Council closing comments, we'll start with Clay.
I'll start off with how, uh, how everything went a couple of weeks ago with. The homecoming weekend, uh, it was really exciting to see everything going on with. The Gray Eagle Warrior Challenge, thanks Mark for coming out and running it, and everybody else that came out to participate and watch. Got to go to the Fur Harvesters Expo that afternoon as well, that was really interesting and a lot of. Knowledge, and I hope that they come back again some time in the future. Then, there was. The History in Action Days, the Fallen Day, Dawson County Museum always does a great time at that. We got Harvest Moon Fall Festival coming up this weekend, encourage everybody to go out and enjoy the time this, at that. Or that was it, this last weekend. Get where I'm at. Uh, that was a fun and was a good turnout, fire department had their spaghetti feed, I heard it turned out good and didn't get to make it, but. And that's all I've got.
I'd like to acknowledge this Nat- Natural Food Co-op sent us, the council members, a, a nice thank you card for. They were the recipients of some LB eight forty community development funds, um. And putting a couple of new cooler in and I think another refrigerator, so appreciate them, uh, sending the thank you. Two weeks ago tomorrow, I think, or yesterday, or maybe just a week, no, just a week ago. I had the honor of welcoming the lead with, um, individuals, which stands for Leadership Education and Agriculture Development, I believe. Um, it's a program that started by the University of Nebraska and. These individuals sign up for a two-year, um, course, and they have seminars, various. Seminars across the state and included in their program is a trip overseas, so they, it's. Big time commitment, but it's well worth the time for anyone that has, it's the right age, probably in their. Late twenties, thirties, um, that probably catch most of them. But Shane and I both enjoyed meeting them and having dinner with them and. All, I wanna reiterate the compliments about the Harvest Moon Festival and the Shatton Volunteer Fire Department with their. Annual spaghetti sub-feed.
My turn, um, wanted to thank, uh, Tom, um, for the. The, the college and the high school graduation weekend for cutting those weeds down in the West Tenth Street. Median that looks nice coming into town. And I was, uh, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, there was a Slim Days, uh, music event, um, that I was a part of. Um, as far as organization, um, we had over six hundred attendees, five to six bands at night. Approximately two hundred and twenty of those attendees were college students, two hundred and seventy-five were out-of-town people. Um, a hundred and twenty-five were locals. Um, the event raised over four thousand dollars in a memorial scholarship at Shatton State College. It was family-friendly and pretty much drama-free for everyone down there. Um, we had people that flew in from North Carolina, LA, Austin, Phoenix, Tempe, Florida, just to name a few. And based off some of our AI models, the economic impact of the event was fifty-eight to fifty-five to fifty-eight thousand. For the one-day event in the community, so.
Well, as the other council members mentioned, with all the activities that have been going on, uh, the last few weeks, it takes, uh, a lot of volunteers to, to make that happen. Whether it's the fire department, or the Gray Eagle Warrior Challenge, or Harvest Moon Festival, or Slim Days. Without the volunteers that are willing to take their time and effort to make those things happen, um. The economic value, you were saying fifty-five thousand dollars, wouldn't happen, so. I encourage people when we have events such as those to participate, um, because if the participation isn't there, those events. Will dry up and we might not have those anymore, so, thanks for everyone that, uh, helps to make those happen.
Define my add to my thing, which I forgot, page two, one of the, uh, uh, local establishments said, um, that night was their biggest night ever on record for sales. So, let's open up the businesses.
It's awesome. I didn't, I'm glad that was so well attended. I thought it was kind of experimental having it down on Second Street, but I'm, I'm glad to hear that was so good. I was gonna talk about the weather, but Tom kinda already covered that. It, it's that, uh, time of year when it feels nice that it's cooler, but, you know, a little leery cuz it gets, just gonna slip right into winter, so. That's all I got, have a great evening.
Mayor, Janet's got one thing.
Forgot to tell Tom to say this. We are going to be, um, sweeping the armor coat chips up, or the chip seal, chips this week. So if you are one of the people that live on those streets that we chip sealed, and you see the sweeper going by and your car is out on the street. You might wanna just temporarily move it when the, uh, street sweeper is in your vicinity so that we can sweep all the way to the curb and gutter. And we appreciate you moving your vehicle when the street sweeper is there. Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Clay, seconded by.
I'll second.
Kevin, adjourn. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Alexi?
Yes.
Thank you all.